I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening, everyone. Let the record show that all members of the city council are in attendance with the exception of Councilman Phil Cook. There is a copy of the Open Meetings Act posted on the west wall and is accessible to members of the public at any time during the course of this meeting. First item on the agenda is item two, Consent Agenda. All items under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. First item on the agenda is item A, Approve Agenda as Submitted. Item B, Receive and Place On File All Items Pertaining to This Meeting. Item C, Receive and Place On File All Materials Having Any Bearing on This Meeting. Item D, Approval of Minutes of Regular Meeting on December 5th, 2016, as in on file at the City Clerk's Office. Item E, Approval of Treasurer's Report of Claims. E1, Approval of Claybaugh Pharmacy Claim in the Amount of $75. E2, Approval of Balance of Treasurer's Report of Claims in the Amount of $320,536.26. Item F, Approval of Boswell Report of Claims. F1, Approval of Claybaugh Pharmacy Claim in the Amount of $107.80. F2, Approval of Report, the Balance of Boswell Report of Claims in the Amount of $54,472.78. Item G, Resolution Number 5992, Entering Into An Agreement With Hannah Kealan Associates, PC, For Professional Services To Update A Blight and Substandard Determination Study And Conduct A General Redevelopment Plan For Redevelopment Area Number One. Item H, Resolution Number 5993, Regulating The Speed Of All Traffic Traveling North Or South On A Part Of 19th Street Between Dorsey Street And Lincoln Street. All Traffic Traveling North Or South On A Part Of 19th Street Between Lincoln And High Street. And All Traffic Traveling North Or South On A Part Of 19th Street Between High Street And Directly South To The Beatrice City Limits. Item I, Resolution Number 5994, Entering Into A Master Service Agreement With Alert Sense Incorporated For The Purchase Of Products, Software And Services For Southeast Regional 9/11 Communication Center. Item J, Resolution Number 5995, Entering Into An Astro 25 System Upgrade Agreement With Maintenance Service Agreements With Motorola Solutions Incorporated For The Purchase Of Products, Software And Services For The Southeast Regional 9/11 Communication Center. Item K, Resolution Number 5996, Executing Amendment Number Four To The City Of Beatrice Board Of Public Works, Flexible Benefit Plan. Item L, Resolution Number 5997, Executing Amendment Number Five To The City Of Beatrice Board Of Public Works, Employee Health Plan. Item M, Resolution Number 5998, Entering Into A Letter Of Agreement For Professional Services With Olson And Associates Incorporated For The Wastewater Bar Screen Design And Installation Project As Recommended By The Board Of Public Works. Item N, Resolution Number 5999, Entering Into A Memorandum Of Understanding With The Nebraska Wesleyan University To Allow For A Tuition Discount For Beatrice City Employees Pursuing An Adult Or Graduate Degree Program. Item O, Resolution Number 6000, Entering Into A Letter Of Agreement For Professional Services With Olson And Associates To Undertake An Industrial Park Roadway Project To Extend Ridgewood Drive North Along With A Portion Of Tegmyre Lane. Item P, Authorize Electric Department To Expend Up To $28,000 For The Purchase Of A Truck As Recommended By The Board Of Public Works. And Item Q, Resolution Number 6001, Entering Into A Lease With Larry Delabar For Pasture Purposes On Property Located Adjacent To The C&amp;D Landfill. Is there any item that a city council member would like removed from the Consent Agenda? Ted?
I have two. Item H is in Henry and then item M is in Mary.
Mr. Claybaugh?
I'd like to abstain from E1 and F1, please.
Alright. Anyone else want something removed from the Consent Agenda? Anyone from the public? Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move that all the items listed under the Consent Agenda, with the exception of items H and M, be approved, accepted, and ratified as presented.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Morgan, that the items listed under the Consent Agenda, with the exception of H and M, be approved. Your vote, please. That is approved. Seven zero. Ted, you want to put him on, or maybe it's me.
Yeah, I did.
Sorry, it's me.
You're good.
Alright, Mr. Catlin, item H?
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5993, Regulating The Speed Of All Traffic Traveling North Or South On Part Of 19th Street Between Dorsey Street And Lincoln Street. All Traffic Traveling North Or South On Part Of 19th Street Between Lincoln Street And High Street. And All Traffic Traveling North Or South On Part Of 19th Street Between High Street And Directly South To The Beatrice City Limits. Be accepted, ratified, as presented. Approved.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, to discuss Resolution 5993, Regulating Traffic Along 19th Street. Discussion. Ted?
I pulled off because I really don't know what's going on with this thing. I don't know where it originated or who had the discussion about it, what we're doing here.
Sure. We received an inquiry from a resident who is in that neighborhood, I think believes that may have a kid that goes to Lincoln School, and asked some questions about the speed limit in front of Lincoln School. And we then went out and looked at what the signage was, and we noticed there were some signs missing. And then we went back and we looked for the resolution that established where those signs should be and what different speed limits were, and we couldn't find it. And so we thought, well, the best thing to do is let's just start over and put it on what it should be. And so that's how we came up with, and you'll notice it's 35 miles per hour from Dorsey down to Lincoln, which is what we've, everybody thought it was, is the way it was signed. Front of Lincoln School's 25 miles per hour, school zone, and then from there back down to the city limits line is 35 miles per hour. The one part we noticed was south of Scott Street, the addition we had when the Good Samaritan Center came in. We never implemented a speed limit on that street. And so we thought, well, now's a good time to correct that and get the speed limit put on there at 35 miles per hour and get that part cleaned up as well.
Okay. Well, I know I was gonna take some phone calls over this. So the whole thing is, we're not really changing anything.
Not changing anything, no.
Okay. And it was brought up by somebody in the area, they want to make sure. So it isn't someone that got ticketed and said, hey, we need to do this?
No, it was, I believe, a mother of a child at Lincoln Elementary School that had some questions, and she did a great job. She contacted us and we then went and looked at it and found that what we meant and what we had said were just a little bit off from one another, so we got them cleaned up.
Okay. I just wanted to be able to explain it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? Alright, your vote, please. And that is approved. Seven zero. Resolution Number 5993 has been passed and approved. Next item is item M. Mr. Catlin?
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 5998, Entering Into A Letter Agreement For Professional Services With Olson Associates Incorporated For The Wastewater Bar Screen Design And Installation Project As Recommended By The Board Of Public Works, Be Approved, Accepted, And/or Ratified As Presented.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, That Resolution Number 5998, Regarding Entering Into A Letter Of Agreement For Professional Services With Olson And Associates For Wastewater Bar Screen Design, Be Discussed Further. Ted?
I pulled it off. I have, I'm tending to vote against it. It's my understanding that Olson Associates weren't the low bid.
That's correct. When you looked at straight, the amount that they bid, Olson's came in, I think $4,500 more expensive than HDR. We then went through and combed through their proposals, make sure they're gonna do the same amount of work. When we got done with that, James' opinion was they were not doing the same amount of work. Olson's was doing more work. The additional work that Olson's had was to get the bar screen into the building requires removal of the roof. Olson Associates are gonna design how to have the roof removed and reinstalled. HDR was gonna leave that up to the contractor. We felt the contractor then would charge us additional money to have that done. In addition, we wanted to have that determined by us rather than by the contractor. The other difference was the HVAC system. Olson's gonna charge us to revamp the HVAC system. HDR was of the opinion that it did not need to be changed. James was of the opinion that it does. Felt there's work that need to be done as a result of this project. The dollar amounts that HDR, or that Olson Associates had on those two projects, when you remove those, Olson's became the low bid. And so that's why when we tried to get apples to apples the best you could, recommendation was to go with Olson Associates.
Well, I, and I, I read that, I got all the information, I certainly understand where the Board Of Public Works was coming from. If there was that much difference in it and there was that much problem, I think that it would've been a better, I think we would've been better served had we rebid it or explained it to them and see if the work was gonna come in. As it is, we're not going with the lowest bidder and it's a substantial amount of money, and I'm still gonna vote against it. I still get it. I think part of, I think we have a problem that we don't get enough bidders on a lot of projects, and I don't think this helps us. So I, I'm just tilting at the windmill a little bit. I just pulled it off so I could vote against it, and I've said my piece. So thanks. I do understand it, though. I understand where you're at.
One thing to remember on engineering services, there are RFQs, Request For Qualifications, not for a bid amount. They don't put dollar amounts into those. We got two responses, and then from there, they were both for competent bidders. We went through the next step, had them put together a scope of work and a cost, and from there's how we started diving through actually who was gonna do what work and at what cost and...
And I completely understand that. I just don't completely agree with it, and so I'm gonna vote against it.
Okay, Ted, thanks. Anybody else? Any questions from anyone else? Anyone from the audience? And your vote, please. That is approved. Six one, with Councilman Fairbanks voting against. Resolution Number 5998 has been approved. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Public hearing on the rezoning of Lot 2, except the south 90 feet thereof, all of Lot 3, and the east half of Lot 4, CL Shells subdivision of lots 25 and 26 In IN McConnell's subdivision, Beatrice, Nebraska, Gage County, Nebraska, commonly referred to As 605 West Court Street From GC General Commercial District And RC Residential Commercial District And Designated Said Property As And To Be Included In A RC Residential Commercial District.
I believe if you look at page 104 in your packet, you can see a kind of a map of where we're talking about. Essentially, when this property was rezoned a number of years ago, we split it down the property line. This owner happens to own a portion of their lot and a portion of the next lot over, and so they actually owned stuff in two different zoning, and all they want to do is add a garage, and in order to do that, we have to rezone it from general commercial to residential commercial, which is what their other, where the house is located is zoned. So that's why we're recommending this zoning change.
And the property surrounding it's all RC?
I think probably the one half is RC, the other half is probably GC.
GC.
And there is a zoning map on page 115 of your packet?
No. My understanding is planning zoning did not have any issues with this, and recommend approval.
If you look right in the center of that zoning map where Sumner intersects Court Street, you'll see CL Shells. This property is lots 2, 3, and 4. You see the big, thick red line that divides 3 and 4. They have half of their house in 4, half of their house in 3 somehow. And so this was a clarification. As you can see, they have residential directly behind them and residential commercial to their west and general commercial to the east. So we're not doing sort of spot zoning or anything like that, but making this one cohesive lot, or parcel at least.
Questions from the council? Anyone from the public? Mr. Catlin, I recommend the public hearing be closed.
Mayor, I move that the public hearing be closed at 7:14 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, that the public hearing be closed at 7:14 PM. Your vote, please. That is approved. Seven zero. Next item is item five, Ordinance To Amend The Zoning Map For The City Of Beatrice, Nebraska By Changing The Zoning Of Lot 2, Except The South 90 Feet Thereof, All Of Lot 3 And The East Half Of Lot 4, CL Shells Subdivision Of Lots 25 And 26 In IN McConnell's Subdivision, Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska, Commonly Referred To As 605 West Court Street From GC General Commercial And RC Residential Commercial To RC Residential Commercial.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number 16-064. The title therefore be approved. The rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, That The Ordinance Be Given Number 16-064. The title there be approved, the rules be suspended, and the ordinance be read by number only three times tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. That is approved. Seven zero. Ordinance Number 16-064 by number the first time. Ordinance Number 16-064 by number the second time. And Ordinance Number 16-064 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 16-064 be passed and approved.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Claybaugh, That Ordinance Number 16-064 be passed and approved. Any further discussion? This is the one we just talked about. From anybody? Audience? Alright, your vote, please. And that is approved. Seven zero. Ordinance Number 16-064 has been passed and adopted. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to vacate a portion of Delaware Avenue located in Brumbach's 2nd addition To The City Of Beatrice, Gage County, Nebraska.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number 16-065. The title therefore be approved. The rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Morgan, That Ordinance Number 16-065, The Title Thereof Be Approved. The Rules Suspended, And The Ordinance Be Read By Number Only Three Times Tonight. Motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that is approved. Seven zero. Ordinance Number 16-065 by number only the first time. Ordinance Number 16-065 by number the second time. And Ordinance 16-065 by number the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 16-065 be passed and appro-
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, That Ordinance Number 16-065 be passed and approved.
Look on page 102 of your packet, you see a map. We've discussed this process before. Delaware Avenue runs parallel to Marlborough Avenue up in the Belvedere area between 3rd and 4th Street. If you remember, Mr. Ron Packett has approached the city. His house is actually built onto what would be Delaware Avenue At some point. We discovered this error when he went and paved a driveway here recently. He was wishing to obtain ownership of the parcel where his house actually sits, and so the first step is to vacate the street, and then the remaining portions of tonight's agenda are to sell the subsequent property to Mr. Packett.
Comments? Anybody from the public? Alright, your vote, please. And that is approved. Seven zero. Ordinance Number 16-065 has been passed and adopted. Next item is an ordinance to convey the vacated portion of Delaware Avenue adjacent to Lot 1 And The East Half Of The Vacated Alley Adjacent To Lot 1, Block 8, Brumbach 2nd Addition To The City Of Beatrice. And Lot 7, And The East Half Of The Vacated Alley Adjacent To Lot 7, Block 4, Brumbach 2nd Addition To The City Of Beatrice. All Gage County, Nebraska, Owned By The City Of Beatrice, Nebraska To Ronald L. Packett.
Mayor, I move that said ordinance be given number 16-066. The title therefore be approved. The rules be suspended, and said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Partey, That The Ordinance Be Given Number 16-066. The Title Thereof Approved. Rules Suspended, And The Ordinance Be Read By Number Only Three Times Tonight. Again, a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable. Your vote, please. And that is approved. Seven zero. Ordinance Number 16-066 by number only the first time. Ordinance Number 16-066 by number the second time. And Ordinance Number 16-066 by number the third and final time.
Mayor, I move that ordinance number 16-066 be passed and appro-
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Kerr, That Ordinance Number 16-066 be passed and approved. Any further discussion needed? From anyone from the public? And your vote, please. And that is approved. Seven zero. Ordinance Number 16-066 has been passed and adopted. Next item is a resolution, Resolution Number 6002, Executing The Contract For Sale Of Real Estate To Ronald L. Packett.
Mayor, I move that Resolution Number 6002 be passed and adopted.
Second.
By Catlin, seconded by Morgan, That Resolution Number 6002 be passed and adopted.
The only thing I would note is, it's a $500 purchase price. We're retaining easement over the entire parcel for utilities, as there are some there existing now, and closing dates in February.
Ted?
Okay. This is the part I'm gonna vote against. I think we're underselling the lot. I have no problem selling the lot, Mr. Packett, but stopped at the courthouse, and this is essentially what happened. The original house was built in 1916. Delaware, it was off of Delaware Street, set back part of it. Somewhere after that time, somebody built an addition onto it, and they did it before probably planning zoning existed or they felt that they needed to get a building permit, and they built the house on part of the street. They just lined it up with, you know, nobody's ever used this, didn't even bother to check, and they built that. So subsequently, later on, Mr. Packett bought the house and the property, and he assumed he bought all of the property, but he's not buying something he didn't own. So I don't have a problem with him buying the property from the city, but I want him to pay what it's worth. So taking a quick travel, us back down memory lane, the first night, we talked about this two months ago or a month or so ago, we bought a piece of property from someone, and we paid $10,000 for it. It was this size, and it's because we put our electric lines on it. A month before, and we paid that, we paid that amount because that's what the value of the land was. A month before that, we were talking about a piece of property that was an alley between two apartment buildings up here on 5th Street, and we talked about all different scenarios on what we could do with it, and we haven't decided on, obviously, but part of the discussion was selling it to each property owner, or one property owner buying all of it. And when we talked about setting the value of the property, we used the formula that we have on value of the property. So that being said, this piece of property would be worth $10,000. I'm not saying, and he's not wanting to buy everything because we're gonna retain the easement, so, but it's my suggestion that he should be paying $5,000 for this, not $500. Now, he thinks he bought it all. He's been paying taxes on it, but that isn't really our fault. That's his fault, or the realtor's fault, whoever us he bought it from, and he has something he can do about that. He can go back to his realtor, he can go back. It's not, it's not collectively the City Of Beatrice's fault, and we shouldn't be selling a piece of property for $500 that's worth $5,000. That's why I'm gonna vote against it. So that's, that's what I brought up.
Okay. Anybody else? Bob?
Yeah, and I understand where Ted's coming from. I think this is an unusual circumstance. I mean, that's why I feel comfortable voting yes because of the unusual circumstance of this.
You're going to, we're gonna have unusual circumstances if every time we sell a piece of property. They're all, they're all different, so...
Any other comments?
So if this vote is defeated, what are his options then? Offer more money or tear it down?
I don't know that it's actually been surveyed as of late. Obviously, the GIS mapping at the assessor's office is not accurate. It's close. Our GIS is a little closer, but without an actual survey of the property with the pins. We can't determine for sure. The only thing that's off that we know of for sure is the port driveways. The port driveways are right in the middle of the roadway.
Did she port and never got permits, or did she get permits?
I think she got a permit. I think, I think Rob went out there, and that's how he was like, hey, you're just going out of this roadway.
They just poured it on the curb cut, and that's when Rob went out.
So, I mean, yeah. I mean, if the issue's the price, then the price is what we're gonna go back to and renegotiate and see if we can get a better price. But if it's some other legal issue, then that's a different matter. He can't take it by adverse possession because it's owned by the city. So that would be another option. But since we're not a private landowner, you can't do that.
Any other comments?
Well, he's mowed it and taken care of it all these years, and we haven't had to bother with it for years.
The only thing we have on there is we have a sanitary sewer line that runs through there. It's the reason we're onto the property most times.
Any other comments?
Where did we come up with the price of 500? Is that something you dictated?
You guys at our last meeting when we talked about it. If we want to talk about price, I'd recommend we go into closed session, talk about price if there's another number we want to make and...
Well, we have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? Anyone from the public? Your vote, please. And that is approved. Six one, with Councilman Fairbanks voting no. Resolution Number 6002 has been approved. Next item on the agenda is Public Forum. Purpose of the Public Forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration at a later date. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Is there anything for the public forum from the council? Anyone from the public? Alright, we'll move on to item seven, City Administrator's Monthly Report.
Just a couple of highlights, if you will. First off, 407 Court Street. For an update, the work inside the building, The Black Crow, has begun. A team of these guys are in there working away, and so you won't see a lot of progress on the outside at this point, but they're making improvements on the inside that are necessary pursuant to King Little. And once those are done, they'll move to the next phase, which will be some more exterior work. So there is, there is progress happening there. Public Properties Department, if you've noticed, has gone around and started marking ash trees in town with a green ribbon for the emerald ash borer. For those of you not familiar with this, it's a little bug that has been found in Nebraska now, and when this bug gets to your ash trees, your ash trees will die within probably the next three or four years, and it'll kill between 80, 90% of them. So we are starting to mark our trees, so give some people indication of which ones are out there. Luckily for us, it's a relatively small number of ash trees percentage-wise, but still a larger number of ash trees when you see them, when they start getting marked. I know he's been down at Chautauqua Park, so if you want us to have some idea of which ones they are. And then finally, I just note 6th Industrial Row, that is out on the street for bids. I think bids are due back January 12th, so we'll open bids at that point, and you're looking for an early spring/summer construction time for that project.
Rich? Going back to your first, first agenda item on your, if and when Bob starts tearing down that building, I noticed that the work on The Black Crow has been done to the front. If there is any problem with the facade of 407 Court going down, was there anything in the contract that we did not have to fix or, for some reason, I can't understand why the work was done on The Black Crow before the building was tore down? Because your front facade of 407 Court, if you start to take it down, if we have any problems with her facade, do we have to pay for it, or is that all under Bob's liability or?
I'm gonna let Mr. Butcher handle that one.
Me too.
That one's, to say the least, it's complicated, but in regards to the way that... Well, it is complicated because the way the buildings are tied, if you go up and look at it closely, you'll notice that there's brick in the facade missing, and that's to take out the parks that were tied together. What Bob will ultimately do is detach what's commonly known as the stairwell of 407 Court. It was actually built later than the original building. He's gonna make sure that that's detached. The facade on that wall is actually gorgeous on the inside. It is probably the best thing of all the buildings. It's a perfectly clear, clean, mortared wall, once he detaches it from the top in the front facade. Most of the facade has been detached from The Black Crow. And so what they've done is, rather than finishing that and having issues, the masonry professional will come back at the end, once it's all ripped off, taken down. He's gonna fix that side of the wall, and then he's gonna fix the last portion above 407 Court on The Black Crow that they couldn't reach with their extensions and things like that, and they'll go tuck point that middle section of The Black Crow, and then The Black Crow will be done as well.
Well, he'll corner tie that. I all understand that. But if there is any damage, you didn't answer my question. If there is any damage to The Black Crow, does Bob have the liability on that, or do we have the liability on that? Because I don't want to spend another dime on that.
You're getting into liability issues with the, depends on if somebody was negligent or not. So I can't, unless you want to get into every precise detail of what he was doing when he took that building down, you're going to be arguing over negligence.
So there is a possibility that our butts are hanging out there again, to spend some more money if something happens.
Just as was stated in the, in the contract, we gave away what liabilities we could, and if any party is negligent, that party's going to be liable. The city's negligent in that matter, we are negligent, we could be liable. I'm not sure how we'll be negligent, but in regards to, that's why we have a structural engineering charge, he's going to take the building down according to those specs. So Bob's insured, I think, I think we'll be all right, but they have a good plan for it. And they're doing this, they're, not that they're trying to not finish it by the time it's due to be done, but they are going very slow and methodical and working with the engineer at all times to make sure this is a nice, clean process.
What's the timeline for the demolition?
Yeah, I didn't want to spin forward.
Joe? Ask that out loud, so if we can hear it.
I said, what's the timeline for the demolition?
I, I think that timeline was due up in April, but looking at getting all the metal elements in for team and construction to complete the structural engineering elements, those were ordered, it's all galvanized, and so that will come in. We did learn that most of it can be hand tightened, that's how much pressure they want in regards to how they're going to tighten all the elements due to the nature, the age of the building, and so that makes it far easier. And so once all that stuff comes in, I know they're up there right now, what they're doing is cutting all the holes and preparing everything, so they can just come in, as soon as the metal elements come in, they drill, attach the, the metal components that sure it up, put in the blocking, screw it in, and then they're done. Then they're going to try and do everything in a row all the time. So one day they're drilling, next day they're blocking, and so that's what they're doing.
Ted, did you have something?
A couple of things. First of all, the properties thing, kudos on the flagpole on West Court. It's been a long time coming to be back up. And just so, and you were talking about the ash borer thing, I think the city of Lincoln had budgeted almost $2 million for their ash borer solution, so be prepared, because we've got to replace those as they die, so...
Yep, Mark is aware of that, and we're working on trying to come up with some type of plan. I think if you read through all the literature, I think they want you to not only cut the tree down, but then also burn it on site. I mean, they, and then obviously there's concern of people having those trees at their own houses, you know, do you do something for them? So we're trying to work through all those problems.
We didn't, we didn't remember many, though, wasn't it a dozen or something?
Oh, we've got more than a dozen. I mean, I think about, if I remember, like, 4% or 5% of our tree inventory is ashes. So when you start thinking how many trees that we have on our city properties, if you go out to the service center, all those trees along the south side of the service center are all ash trees. Quite a few of them at Scott Street were ash, ashes, a lot of those are gone now. Quite a few down in Tacko Park are ashes. So it's not a large number, not a huge percentage, but still it's quite a few trees that you're going to be losing here in the next few years that, quite simply, there's nothing you can do.
There's a solution, but it's really...
It's really expensive.
And it's not guaranteed.
All right. Any other questions of Tobias? All right. With that, our next regular scheduled meeting is on Tuesday, January 3rd at 7 o'clock, so see you next year. Also, we have a work session that is tentatively scheduled for the 27th, and we really don't have much for the work session. Is it all right if we forego a work session on the 27th? Unless somebody has any opposition to that? All right. January 3rd at 7 o'clock in these offices. Motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I want to say something first.
I beg your pardon?
Okay.
No, you're fine.
You're fine.
Mayor, I move that the meeting be adjourned at 7:34 PM.
Second.
Moved by Catlin, seconded by Billsbuck, that the meeting be adjourned at 7:34 PM. Your vote, and that is approved, 7-0.